Welcome everybody out to Planning and Zoning Commission meeting this October 4th. We'll start with Commissioner Mendenhall leading us in the Pledge Allegiance.
Could you please stand and repeat the pledge with me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, John. The first item on business tonight is the minutes, approving the minutes from both the... We have April 6, 2022? Didn't he be reviewed or is that a...?
Yeah, some of those slipped through a crack.
Okay. And then the August meeting.
I move that we approve the minutes from April 6, 2022, and August 2, 2023.
Have a motion to a second?
Second.
Have a motion to a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Staff show that's been approved. Our first agenda item is the lots, construction, preliminary plat, and zone change.
Thank you. Okay. So this site is just west of the intersection of Arrowhead Trail and 1900 South. It's a preliminary plat proposal for a 12-lot standard subdivision. This site is currently zoned rural residential, and the applicant is requesting a zone change to R-115, which would bring some larger residential lots to this area. The DRC and staff recommend that the zone change and preliminary plat be recommended for approval based on the finding that the proposal does align with the general plan designation of a state density residential, and then also subject to the conditions in the staff report. Are there any questions at this point?
At this point, I don't think so. Any other questions? Okay. We might after the applicant speaks to us. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Do you want to go into the... Do you have anything to say for your application? State your name and who you're with and...
Thomas Lots. I'm the owner of the property. Yeah, just changing it to meet the general plan. I think the neighbors just to the east of there had it rezoned to that R-115, which is the same that I'm proposing. But yeah, any questions from you?
Is this the entirety of the property that you own there?
Yeah. Yep, so it's the entire 6.2 acres, which comes out to about 12 individual lots.
Great.
Any questions?
No? Any others?
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
This is a public hearing, so we'll open up to mayors to speak on this. For all public hearing things, we limit the amount of time you have to speak, roughly three minutes, go over things, if you're going to be repeating things. If you hear it stated before, we don't need to hear the same things over and over again. Just you can state your mind, you agree with the previous speaker or whatever. But please come up if you have anything to say on this matter, and we'd love to hear your comments.
Hi, I'm Jackie Larson. Can we back up to the aerial view of it? Either one, that one or the next one. It's over too far. So, one thing here is there's soil and water, my two issues with it. There's a drain that goes through here, so there's several like springs and seeps along the hillside. This is one of the main drains that goes underneath the highway there and then actually under Arrowhead and then connects into Beard Creek. A second thing is this area right here is clay. No matter how much fill you put on top of it, it's not going to bind to that soil, and my concerns for the homes that are going to be built here structurally, foundation-wise, and like mold issues that might come because this is the bottom of the... Well, the lowest spot here. But do you guys know where the drain is? John, do you know where the drain is?
I don't know.
So... Is there... Where's the laser? Or a little touchy? I'll just do it this way. So do you see where it has the numbers of the street?
You can attempt it with one of these if you want, but they never work for me.
Okay, right around here, there's a drain that goes through. So I would just probably suggest and encourage that whoever it is goes and talks with the regulatory people because Olson's Greenhouse didn't have a great outcome like this. So you could see, yes, right there, goes right through there. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, we'll close public hearing for that topic. So first I want to comment, that's the first time I've heard John say he doesn't order a drain or a ditch as that.
Hey, that's a first.
To staff, Jackie brought up the concern about drainage and that. I'm assuming that with, as with all, our any developments going on, every structure's built, it's going to have a soils report, it'll have a thorough review of the plans to make sure that the foundations match the conditions of the soils and that the drainage, the slopeage is all correct for anything to be built there.
Yeah, that's correct. We actually hired a consultant for this whole Leeland area kind of to do a storm drain master plan for the area. And so we have that report, we supplied it to the applicant, made comments on his initial smitten. So, yeah, we'll kind of follow that master plan that Hanson and Alouz did for us.
Okay.
Can... May we go back to the aerial? Where's the closest residential to this area? Other single-family homes in relation to that property?
To the east. Right there.
Thank you.
To the applicant, I'd like to ask, you stated that the property just to the east of this, it's been approved that they go ahead and build with the R-15 designation? Are they planning to develop soon, or will you be doing that independent of them?
When I talked to her, she said that, I think she just got divorced from her husband a couple of years ago. They were in the process of either selling it or doing some development, but I think that's kind of put on hold with the divorce. She was willing to sell it at some point, but I don't think she has any plans of developing it anytime soon. It would help me a lot if she did because then we could kind of coordinate the roads going through there. But I don't think she has any plans. She said she's had a few people offer money on the property. She's not sure if she wants to sell it or not. But yeah, so this would be kind of the first. Her house is just actually right next to the property. But yeah, there would... Most of the utilities are there. We'd have to bring in the pressurized irrigation from all the way down the road, and that would be for all the development in that area. But yeah, she doesn't have any plans. As far as the drain under the road, yeah, we'd have to hardpipe all that current drainage and have that diverted there. And I don't think clay is too big of an issue if you've got enough fill. We did have the geotech report done on the property, and I think it does require two feet of structural fill under anything. When they did the borings, they didn't find any water, but there is a lot of groundwater, and most of it's from the irrigation. They flood irrigate the properties all around there, and so if you come at some times, you'll see two feet of water just covering the property because when they irrigate it, they completely flood all that. So it, on the plans, is going to be a significant fill to bring the property up to grade because right now it is in the low spot. But as far as structurally, I don't know if they'll allow basements. They probably could, but I doubt it would... It wouldn't be as suggestible. But there's plenty of houses there that don't have basements that do just fine.
While you're there, as I looked at the plans and stuff, the planned access is to come out onto Arrowhead Trail, and then it looks like it is planned to go further, to go out north at some point in time. Is that right?
As far as access from the road...
The roads.
Yeah, there would have to be a slowdown lane. But the property just to the east is actually has, is planning to do kind of an intersection at that point, which would be another access as we tie into their property. And so, right now, I only have one access, but once they develop that land to the east, they would have another point of access.
They tie into that road. So the question that I have for you is that have you been in contact with, if I'm not mistaken, isn't Arrowhead Road a state road?
Yeah.
So have you been in contact with them?
Yeah, so we'll have to get an easement and all that.
That it's going to take to get onto the road?
We were hoping we could push that to the final plat review as part of it, but I know they kind of wanted it with the preliminary plat review as the easement and the approval. But we haven't got that yet.
Okay.
So it sounds like there's a lot of details to be worked out, a lot of things that need to happen, but as far as, as far as I'm concerned, I think it is with working with the city staff and getting, going with all the ordinances and regulations, once that's done, then I think it looks great.
I have one other question about the drainage. There is that drain there, and the reason is, is there, or the reason that it's there, I'm sure is because it is the low point. And if you put, bring in two feet of fill, that may change that low point to something somewhere east and maybe even pushed around to the north and go further west of you. Is there a, is there a collection system that is planning to be put in there for the groundwater? I know that there's not a lot of groundwater, that most of it is surface, but the concern on the ag side of things is always, where's that water going? The rest of the fields around don't have two feet of standing water, you know? They just put the water down there and it ends up at the end of the field. So, you know, it, the whole area isn't two feet deep, it's just here where this collects.
Yeah, it would push it. We would, we'd still drain and we'd have to have an onsite detention area where the water is allowed to seep back in. I think we've got that in the design as well. But it would push all the water around the property, but it would still collect there and run under the road where that culvert is.
So you would likely take it from the north, or from the east, and maybe have to take it from the north and bring it to that drain that goes under the road south?
Yeah, right now it's just an open ditch.
Okay.
Obviously where it's going to be developed is going to be underground piping, but it would just go from the ditch to the underground piping and be run under the road where that culvert is right now.
So you are, so at that point in time, will that be an engineering issue that'll have to be resolved, or will it be with the city as we get down to the final plat?
Yeah, engineering will work with them as we go to final, making sure that's taken care of, that's part of that Hanson and Alouz study too. This is one of the main crossings to get all the stormwater for the whole area to Beard Creek. And so, like you said, we'll, they'll have a detention, but we'll make sure to, as we go along Arrowhead, that there's inlets to collect any of that water draining around the development and get it into that culvert crossing Arrowhead.
And it'll have to be sized for future development upstream, obviously, because this will be kind of the collection point to divert all the water under the road. So all that storm drain piping will have to be sized for everything that's going to be developed in the future, that area.
Okay. Sure.
So just irrigation-wise, we only irrigate our grass field, that's quite a bit further north than that, and just past our silo, the east side of that, it's always been wet, and we don't irrigate that part just for clarification purposes.
Thank you. Any other comments? If there's not, entertain a motion.
I move that the proposed preliminary plat and zone change be recommended for approval based on the findings and subject to the conditions. And make sure, I mean, let the public know that the conditions are that the applicant meets the city's zoning requirements and construction standards, and that the applicant addresses any red lines, so that's my motion.
Second?
Second.
Have a motion to a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. So the motion passes? Go on from there. Our second order of business is the orchard preliminary plat and zone change.
Yeah, so this site is on the east side of town, it's just north of the Johnson subdivision. This is a proposal for a preliminary plat with a 14-lot standard subdivision. And the site is currently zoned rural residential, and applicant is requesting a zone change to R-115. And the DRC and staff recommend that the zone change and preliminary plat be approved based on the finding that this proposal aligns with the general plan designation of a state density residential, and then also subject to the conditions in the staff report. So the next steps for the applicant will be to resolve all the conditions of the preliminary plat before the zone change is reviewed by city council, and then also just to work with engineering to appropriately, or appropriately assign land for future railroad expansion on the eastern property line.
Could you tell us a little more about the future rail expansion on that side?
Sure. So along that eastern property line, you can see the railroad right there. As of right now, they have 30 feet designated for future right-of-way, but they'll likely need more. We're just working on clarifying that, and then the applicant will address that with their future submissions.
If they need more, does that shrink any of the, does it make it so it doesn't meet the zone change they're asking for?
So they should be able to still meet all of their standard lot sizes, so they would meet the requirements of the zone as well.
You might tell us what is on the south side and the north side of that. It's pretty evident with the aerial view, but...
Sure. So to the south is an approved subdivision, correct? Approved subdivision. And then on the north, there is some undeveloped property. I believe there's one house on that lot. Just a little bit more. Yeah, right, uh, north, just a little.
There you go. Yep. There you go.
Yeah, everything.
That's the DB Horton subdivision. Thank you. Yeah, we had this same discussion on that lot, what, a month or two ago?
Yes.
And just to the, the one just to the south, is that the DR Horton Development or a separate developer?
It's separate.
Oh, okay.
The DR Horton Development is south of the development, that's south of the orchards.
Oh, gotcha.
Right there.
Oh, gotcha.
Fieldstone Homes is the applicant. I think they're still the property owner on the one in between.
Okay. Thank you. If the applicant's here, do they want to speak to this?
We appreciate the staff. Yeah, we're just following the current general plan.
Can you, just for the record, state your name and company?
Okay, Bart Bogus. We own the orchard over there.
Great.
And so the property, it's right next door to Fieldstone Homes, so Fieldstone will be building homes directly to the south of us, and then you've got the DR Horton. We were hoping to get the DR Horton zoning, but we'll just settle for the, the R-15, or the R-115, but yeah, complies with the general plan, so. Any other questions?
Your orchard is beautiful. I, I, we've, I've driven by there for many, many years, so it's, it's beautiful.
So we had bad news that the, the elk came down this winter and like destroyed a lot of the trees. Yeah, unusual year, but...
Any questions while you're here in front of us?
I'll just make a comment that I, I like that the, the zoning is R-15.
R-15?
Yeah, R-115. It's, it's what has been designated there in the general plan, and appreciate that you're complying with that.
Do you have concerns about the expanded possible right-of-way for the rail line?
Uh, no, they were just going to double-check with Union Pacific, so...
When that was brought up, it looks like it would be the two largest lots that are in that cul-de-sac, and so if it takes some of that acreage out of there, they should still be well within the...
Hope so.
...limits.
Yeah, there's extra, those lots are extra big, so...
Right. So if they do, if it's necessary, they should be okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
This is also a public hearing, so if anybody's here to speak on this topic, please approach the podium. Seeing none, we'll close public hearing. Do any of the commissioners have any comments? Nope. Okay, if not, we'll have a well-entertained motion on this topic.
I move to recommend the proposed preliminary plat and zone change for approval based on the findings and subject to the conditions listed in the staff report.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion to a second. How does everybody vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. So that will go, that'll all get bundled up and presented in a future council meeting.
Two weeks from last night.
Yep. Okay. Okay, next topic is a zone change for Sippin.
So this site is at the corner of 100 East and 300 South. The zone change proposal is to make some site improvements and open a boutique on-site. So the site is currently zoned R-16, and the applicant is requesting a zone change to general commercial with the addition of the development enhancement overlay. So the site currently has issues with circulation, so the drive-through traffic kind of gets backed up on 100 East and starts to block those driveways. So we believe that the proposed changes would really be a good improvement for the site. The new circulation pattern would kind of restrict access and exit flows, which would be solving that issue of the cars backing up on 100 East. The proposal would also enhance the landscaping on-site and add some park strips where there currently aren't any. And the proposal would also provide some additional screening on the north side between residential and commercial uses with a masonry wall. So the DRC and staff recommend that this zone change be recommended for approval based on the finding that the proposal does align with the general plan designation of mixed use, and then also conforms to the intent of the development enhancement overlay, and then also subject to the conditions in the staff report.
So can you walk me through what the new route will be?
Yeah, so...
These eyes can't, can't see from here.
Yeah, so you'd come in from 300 South, move north, go around your drive-through, and then you can either exit back onto 300 South, or if you go around again, come out to 100 East. But the idea is that you'd come out on 300 South.
First East will be an exit only?
Correct.
Like for people, whoever's parking on the back north end of the lot?
Yeah.
All the entrance will be along King, or Third South?
Correct.
And then they'll also exit as they're coming through the drive-through, that exit that way also?
They have the ability to, yes.
So it's, that is an entrance only that has to go back around to First East?
So 300 South is entrance and exit, but 100 East is just exit, which would solve that issue of cars backing up while they're waiting in line.
Okay, I'm going to try to use the... Oh, did I just do something?
Yep. I'm telling you, man.
Is there a way to point you this is?
Just get you an old-fashioned laser pointer.
How do you use it?
You're not supposed to have the golden one.
Oh! Okay, thank you.
The golden ticket. Oh, we have golden ones.
Wait, what did I just do? Okay. So they're adding parking right here, or is that parking? Okay. And then, did you say they're also adding a boutique? Did I hear you say that? Like, is this a separate building that's being added? This is the...
So both buildings are existing, and then I believe they'd be opening a boutique in the one that's more north, so the...
This one?
Yeah.
So this is Sippin, they're changing, and so there's now going to be two businesses?
Yes.
Oh, it's ju... Oh...
One is Sippin.
So we're taking...
So that house, there's a house right there.
Taking that house out.
That's going to become, and, but then the drive-through is going to be around here?
Right.
Okay.
The problem has always been the drive-through, well, my perspective is driving through there or going there, is the queue goes down First East.
Yeah, I've been in that queue too, and it is obnoxious.
I think that cleans up that problem nice.
Yeah. And it sounds like they'll improve the look of the whole property and usability. What, what have the neighbors said about the changes and improvements?
Oh, it's a great question.
They may be here.
That's why we have a public hearing.
Maybe that's why we have public hearing?
Yeah.
I'm not aware of any calls that we've received or anything. Mary, do you?
No, yeah, I haven't, I haven't heard anything.
No comfort, okay.
Have any more people to talk?
The current location was so difficult because the turn into there, most people came from the north, and it's the wrong side of the street. There's not very much street there, you know, to come in on First East there, so people were parked on both sides of the road, it wasn't convenient. This is a big improvement as far as I'm concerned, yeah.
It's a hard place to turn in, if you're, to turn into if you're coming from the north or the west, but you could always go around the block, I guess, the other way.
Or if you're coming from the east.
Right. So go around the block and come from the east.
Right. So...
We love our soda.
Thank you. Is the applicant here? Does anyone want to speak to this? If not, okay, we'll move on to public hearing. We'll open up public hearing on the Sippin topic. Is anybody here to speak on this? Please come up.
Hi, my name's Adrian Laritzen. I'm just north of the Sippin, so I'm at 257 South, 100 East. Yeah, just that lot right above, yeah. And while I do think this is going to be a big improvement, and I'm excited that it's not going to be, people won't be lining up so much in front of my house, I do have concerns about another business being there and how much more traffic might even come down 300 South. And I know people go really fast on that road, people go really fast on my road too. I mean, people just drive fast, right? But if we have an exit and an entrance right in the same spot, I worry about if maybe the, the neighbors next door now are going to have to deal with what I've been dealing with.
The neighbors on Kane Road?
Right, well, right, 300 South, yeah. I know there's Trevor and Suzie, and I don't think they're here tonight. What's that? Oh, Sydney's here too. Yeah, so Sydney's three houses down too. And Mary, she lives, she's right here, she lives right across from it as well. And I think all of us on 100 East have really had to deal with a lot of concern, especially because there's a lot of grandchildren and children that we all deal with. So I think it's an exciting move, but I also am concerned, if there is going to be a parking lot, I would really appreciate having that cinder wall. I do have a son, and I don't necessarily like the idea of it becoming a hangout spot maybe, or like people hanging out there after hours. So that's just some of the concerns that I have about the changes.
While you're here, so if the choice is keep it the way it is with the existing problems or take these steps to improve them, what would your opinion be?
I do like this way better. I think it will be safer. I like the idea, because right now we have people that are like whipping a U-turn to get onto 100 East and people pulling out and then people, you know, so it's, and then there's a line, and then there's like three cars, and it's, it's a cluster, so.
Yes.
I'm telling you, man.
Is there a way to point you this is?
Just get you an old-fashioned laser pointer.
Thanks, sir.
How do you use it?
You're not supposed to have the golden one.
Oh!
The extra.
Okay, thank you.
Golden ticket, oh, we have golden ones.
Wait, what did I just do? Okay, so they're adding parking right here, or is that parking, okay. And then, did you say they're also adding a boutique? Did I hear you say that? Like, is this a separate building that's being added? This is the?
So, both buildings are existing, um, and then I believe they'd be opening a boutique in the one that's more north, so the.
This one?
Yeah.
So this is Sippin, they're changing, and so there's now gonna be two businesses?
Yes.
Oh, it's ju- oh.
One is Sippin.
So we're taking.
So that house, there's a house right there.
Taking that house out.
That's gonna become, and, but then the drive-through is gonna be around here.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, the problem has always been the drive-through, well, my perspective is driving through there or going there, is the queue goes down.
Yeah.
First east.
I've been in that queue too, and it is obnoxious.
I think that cleans up that problem nice.
Yeah, and it sounds like they'll improve the look of the whole property and usability. Uh, what, what have the neighbors said about the changes and improvements?
Uh, it's a great question.
They may be here.
That's why we have a public hearing.
Maybe that's why we have a public hearing?
Yeah.
I'm not aware of any calls that we've received or anything. Mary, do you?
No, yeah, I haven't, I haven't heard anything.
Not comfort, okay.
Have any more people to talk?
The current location was so difficult because the turn into there, most people came from the north and it's the wrong side of the street. There's not very much street there, you know, to come in on First East there, so people were parked on both sides of the road. It wasn't convenient. Uh, this is a big improvement as far as I'm concerned, yeah.
It's a hard place to turn in, if you're, to turn into if you're coming from the north or the west, but you could always go around the block, I guess, the other way.
Or if you're coming from the east.
Right, so go around the block and come from the east.
Right, so.
We love our soda.
Thank you. I'm his applicant here. Do they wanna speak to this? If not, okay, we'll move on to public hearing. We'll open up a public hearing on the Sippin topic. Is anybody here to speak on this? Please come up.
Hi, my name's Adrian Laritson. I'm just north of the Sippin, so I'm at two fifty-seven south, one hundred east. Yeah, just that lot right above, yeah. And, um, while I do think this is gonna be a big improvement and I'm excited that it's not gonna be, people won't be lining up so much in front of my house. I do have concerns about another business being there and how much more traffic might even come down three hundred south. Um, and I know people go really fast on that road, people go really fast on my road too. I mean, people just drive fast, right? Um, but if we have an en- exit and an entrance right in the same spot, I worry about if maybe the, the neighbors next door now are gonna have to deal with what I've been dealing with.
The neighbors on Kane Road.
Right, well, right, three hundred south, yeah. I know there's Trevor and Suzie, and I don't think they're here tonight. What's that? Oh, Sydney's here too, yeah. So Sydney's three houses down too. Um, and Mary, she lives, she's right here. She lives right across from it as well. And I think all of us on one hundred east have really had to deal with a lot of, um, concern, especially 'cause there's a lot of grandchildren and children that, uh, we all deal with. Um, so I think it's an exciting move, but I also, um, am concerned, if there is gonna be a parking lot, I would really appreciate having that cinder wall. Um, I do have a son and I don't necessarily, uh, like the idea of it becoming a hangout spot maybe, or like people hanging out there after hours. Um, so that's just some of the concerns that I have about the changes.
While you're here, um, so if the choice is keep it the way it is with the existing problems, or take these steps to improve them, what would your opinion be?
I do like this way better. I think, um, it will be safer. I like the idea, because right now we have people that are like whipping a U E.
Right.
To get on to one hundred east and people pulling out and then people, you know, so it's, and then there's a line and then there's like three cars and it's, it's a cluster, so. I mean, either way, it's a bad location, but I think this can be a lot better. Um, but I do have some concerns about it really, still, just because of the location, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just think it's an absolute miracle. Something hasn't happened there.
Accident, you mean?
The traffic is terrible. Fast.
What this year.
And that's kinda my, I'm Sydney Carlson. I'm at one sixty-nine east, three hundred south, so it's coming onto my road. I do agree with Adrian that I think it's a better solution, um, but I am concerned about cars backing up on three hundred south. Because it is such a busy road and a fast road, and there is a shoulder there, but there's very often cars in the shoulder, so. Just if people are trying to get into Sippin and it's backed up, where do they go? Is kinda my question. Um, I think that's really just it. My other thing concerned was, if I'm understanding right, the entrance driveway and the exit driveway. In the plans, I saw they were next to each other.
Yeah.
Are, is that still the case? There's two exit possibilities, or is there just the one on the one hundred?
There's one is the exit only on First East.
Where the, where the entrance used to be, correct?
Yep, and, yep, and then on, on Third South, that, or they're circling now, will be an entrance and an exit.
So my only concern with that is already that drive, that parking lot is so dangerous for kids to be walking across. And now we've got cars going one way and another way. Just, is there a, don't park on the dr- on the sidewalk, or is there gonna be a clear path for people to walk? On that road, 'cause it does get very busy during its busy times. So that, those were my only concerns, so, thank you.
Legitimate.
Yeah. Is there anybody else? Okay, we'll close public hearing. Would like to address a few of those, uh, concerns. Have any of the red lines that the staff has addressed anything as far as how the queuing will be handled? As far as keeping a, a, a walking path or any of that open? Has that been brought up?
Um, we typically don't have that as a red line. It's something we watch for. In, in this case, you're, they're lengthening their queuing as, as it goes to Sippin. Now you're que- you can queue all the way around the building, so that, I, that will help get a lot of traffic off the road and into the parking lot.
Do you have any idea what that, it looks like nine, ten cars could be stacked up in that?
Yeah, quite a bit. We, we haven't done, uh, auto turn or anything to, to count them. I guess it is something we can look at and, and get back on, but it's definitely a greater length than a, at least double, probably triple what they have now in queuing length.
Is there, is there, again, by the front doors where there's parking now, 'cause I think that's where the kids get really messed. Is that gonna be done away with, or?
Well, you can see where the parking is.
Yeah, just right out front, 'cause that's the scary part, I think, for the kids, so.
Right, so they will be fixing that and then adding more, um, I believe, concrete. And then having that area right now that's parking be like a picnic area for people to sit.
Will there be an entrance to the building there?
Uh, I think they're just keeping the entrances as they are now. I don't believe they're changing that.
Uh, is the, okay, going back to the, wait, is this the red button or this the red button? Um, so the second building that's a house right now, people are living in it as a residence, is that correct?
No, no one has lived there for probably three or four years.
Okay.
They were, there were people living there when they were put down.
Like eight years ago, but they turned it into like a bakery and then now it's, I think, used to be storage. They go in and out of there for like ice and stuff, yeah.
Okay, I'm just, I'm, that's something that it feels kinda like it just is like, oh, and we're gonna also add a whole nother business, like, you know, it feels a little bit like. Smoke and mirrors or something, like, you're adding a whole, a second business to that lot, which means more people driving in. What's that gonna look like when the queuing comes up and around? And I wanna go to that really cute boutique, but then the line is in my way for the soda. Like, is there a way for me to drive past, uh, past the line? My other thought is, uh, is I wonder if, I don't know if this is appropriate, Dave, but can we have, can the owner say? Put some signage that says something like, you know, the queue may not block the sidewalk, or please, you know, do not block the sidewalk so people can walk past. Is that, is that appropriate? Is that normal? Do people care?
I've seen things like that, and in fact, the sidewalk there is the city's sidewalk, so it could be the city, you know, putting that kind of signage up.
I can think of one other place in that general area where the sidewalk gets blocked a lot too, and I.
Every Friday night.
Uh, so I.
You're gonna make me guess?
Oh, at Berry's, where people are driving through into Berry's.
Oh, yeah.
So.
It's more often than Friday nights, right?
Yeah, anyway, I'm just wondering if that is a problem, how, I mean, especially if you have kids.
It could be signed as a problem.
Around, anyway. Is that an appropriate thing to ask?
Anything you wanna ask is appropriate, for sure.
To ask for, I can not, I'll ask all the questions.
I think they've, they've added parking stalls. It feels like they've added four or five parking stalls, and I don't know how much. I mean, I think I've only walked in that place once.
I doubt that there'll be more.
And if the drive-through is triple capacity of what it currently is.
Right. If it does wrap around and people are trying to go out, it would be obnoxious to be parked in the ones that are on the right-hand side there, but everything else seems to fall pretty smooth.
I have one quick question about the fencing. Uh, I'm not sure what the fencing is on this property now. Is it cinder block? Is it some other fencing? And will fencing be required with these changes?
The east side currently is, is the.
So, along the eastern side, they have an existing concrete wall that they're gonna keep. And then on the north wall, or, or north property line right now, they have a chain link fence, so they'll be replacing that with a masonry wall.
Okay, that's great.
Which addresses the, the first resident's folks' concern, yeah.
Does the, does our city parking requirements, are they met on this lot?
So, they'd be about six lot, or six stalls short, but they're kinda making up with that, up for that with their, um, landscaping, so they are meeting our landscape requirement.
There we go.
So, they'll have grass, shrubs, and trees, so they'll be creating park strips along the north, or sorry, south property line and the west property line. So they'll be adding trees and grass there, um, and same along the south. And then in the, in the back, um, they'll have a grass strip along the masonry wall, um, and a couple of trees back there, I think.
That looks like. Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any other thoughts or questions?
Nope.
Is anybody else concerned about having an extra business put on that lot?
Well, my question is the request, do we have any authority about how many businesses are in that? Are, are we just addressing, changing the enhancement overlay? Are, we're not addressing adding a business? We're addressing the overlay?
Um, ultimately, the city council, as I understand it, has, uh, complete discretion on approving the development enhancement overlay or not. Um, and inasmuch as the applicant's represented that that's what they wanna use that additional space for, you know, for a, a separate retail use. I think it's entirely appropriate to consider that just as part of the package that's being proposed, and if that's a concern, um, I think that could be. A reason to recommend that their proposal be denied.
What kind of boutique?
Well, and I wanna suggest this, I do not know why the applicant is not here or is not represented. Um, if you have questions of that nature, I think it might be appropriate, it's your call, to continue this until they.
Because it might affect the parking, depending on what kinda boutique it is.
And I.
If it's very niche and they don't need a lot of parking, but if it's something very popular that drives traffic to the site.
I, I think I know, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna go out on a limb even to, to try to answer that question.
I look at this site and what's planned, and I think it surpasses any other, uh, Sippin or any other drink site that I've seen. For parking, for queuing, and everything else, and considering that they have the sec- seven parking places in the back, plus the ones on the side. I think that that probably is, you know, most of these places are drive-up, and there's not too many of us that want to stop and go in. With the exception of the kids that are walking.
But what about the new business?
The new business, well, that's what I'm saying. I don't think, I think that, uh, probably that number of parking spots will be if, I mean, this is going to be a small.
Yeah.
If they're gonna have, if they're gonna have a boutique in there, it's gonna be really small.
But staff, they would have staff that needs parking.
That's, you know, honestly, uh, two staff people probably, I would, yeah, I'm speculating, right?
You're speculating what it is. We're, we're just putting a C two. We don't know what boutique, what it really is.
Inasmuch as oftentimes the, the drink kinda business, they really don't end up needing much customer parking. We've observed a handful.
No, I agree.
But, you know, they probably have three or four employees, maybe even more, so I could easily see between that and any other uses there. You know, maybe half of the parking spaces being just used by employees. But then again.
Their current staff parking has worked with less parking stalls now. It's, I think Michelle's concern is the future business.
Yeah.
My, yeah, I think my, my next concern has to do with those parking stalls that are on the east side. The ones that look like they're parallel parking. I would almost rather those parking stalls not be there so that there is a lane. For people to get through to the parking on the back of the, on the back. If I wanna go visit that cute boutique, I'd rather pull off of Third South. I can park on Third South, but I'd rather pull off.
To me, I'd rather keep the parking there. I, I get what you're saying, but I, I think it'd be good to have the parking there for, to me, their needs. They could still move through the queue. If, if it is backed up to that point.
Right, if you can, if it's.
Yeah.
Drive-passable, that's, that's not proper English, but.
But it, but it can make the point really well.
Anyway, I don't, I don't feel completely comfortable passing it. I'd rather have the applicant here to visit with before recommending, but that's just me.
I kinda feel like, uh, that there's enough, uh, enough that we've seen here to make a decision. Uh, we don't know what will be there if the parking becomes an issue. That might have to be addressed, I guess, but, uh, we're, we're talking about something we don't even know about yet. Hasn't been constructed, uh, we don't know. I guess that's the reason, that's not a bad reason, Shawna, to have the applicant here. Maybe what we could do is to add that as a condition of approve, that, you know, our recommendation of approval, that be addressed to the city council. About, uh, you know, what, what their plans are for that building and, uh, for that business. And, uh, clarify that somewhat with us, be okay. But I think I would rather go forward with it, uh, from here, and they do, you know, they've still gotta go through the city council. And we could make that a part of our motion, that that be addressed with, with the ci- or at least addressed, not necessarily resolved, but. That that be something that is addressed with the city council.
Mike, do you have any comments?
I think it's a big improvement. I share the same concerns about what's in the building, but that could always change next year anyway, so.
But then they'd have to come and get a reapproval, is that right? Because it's a conditional use?
Yeah, if it's, if it's a similar use, if it's another retail type use, then we would not require them to come back through. It has been customary with the development enhancement overlay if they wanted to change the use to get it re-approved. Most likely, a retail use would, I, typically retail uses generate more traffic than the other uses that I could see somebody maybe. Having in a building like that, maybe a little office or something like that. So you might be looking at, at the most intense parking demand with it being what's proposed now.
I guess that there had to have been some consideration with this because they're using the overlay, uh, as the tool that allows them to do this in the first place. Second of all, uh, we don't know what will be in the, at this site in ten years. You know, I've wondered when we're going to meet, reach the tipping point for these drink places. At what point in time will there be more than we need, and so they begin to drop. And so if they're hard to get to, those will be the ones that go away. If they're easy to get to and parking is easy, that's where you're gonna, or, I mean, uh, the queue is easy, that's where you'll be going.
If, if we were to recommend this, would staff be comfortable recommending that the applicant attend city council? Because I feel like if they were here, we could get some questions answered.
Yeah, um, what I'm hearing is that the planning commission, and this is what I'm hearing, okay? Not trying to put words in anybody's mouth, but that there's support for the proposed changes, um, which incidentally staff completely agrees with. But that there are reservations about adding an additional use because of concerns about parking. And how even traffic flow on the site might be impacted with an additional use there. And that you would like those concerns addressed somehow with the city council or before it's presented to the city council, something like that.
I think support, I, I, I agree, John. I think this is an improvement. I would like to see this, as far as the Sippin side of it, I think it's an improvement. It helps. Helps out a condition that already exists in the neighborhood.
A really poor condition, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I emphasize, like, this is.
In many ways unsafe and, and annoying to the neighbors around it. Um, I think this improves that a lot. I think it's very unfortunate that the applicant, this could be resolved really quickly, um, if they, uh, take the opportunity to come and speak to us tonight. So I don't know, I, myself, I don't know, there's, uh, John feels the, he'd like to have this move ahead with the, with that being added to it. Uh, my thought is just to table it and, and come back to it next month, but I, I don't have strong opinions either way either. So we clouded the water enough?
What if I, what if I make a motion and it dies of a sec- uh, lack of a second?
Then you'd be like Joseph.
I'd make a motion, or I move, I should say, I move that the site plan and zone change be recommended for approval. Based on the findings and conditions listed, uh, by staff with an additional. An additional condition that the owner of the property. Discuss with staff and the city council. The business and parking issues that have been raised.
Okay. Did you get that? Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second? I don't have a second.
It dies, it dies. So you need another motion?
I move that we table this until, uh, the next month or at the opportunity that the applicant can appear before the planning commission.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any pose? That motion passes. So we'll see this next month, or, well, or whenever the applicant is available to come in and, 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 uh, address the concerns. Okay, very good. Um. The next topic?
Wait just a minute, she.
What?
Oh, no, go ahead.
I, I'm not clear on the exits on this, on the First East, Third South, is that right, exits?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so the. Yeah. So the exit on the First East is the one that's the end?
Yeah, entrance right now.
No, First East will be the exit.
Only exit.
Exit.
That's where the entrance is right now.
It is where the entrance is right now, yes.
That will be a mess. It will be a mess, moving out on the First East. It will.
They will, the, the
It's a absolute
The way the traffic will work is, can you put that slide back up again, please? I know we've moved on, but I wanna make sure this is explained. Do you have your, have you figured out your pointer yet? Which one?
It doesn't, it's not working. Top? Okay. All right.
So, if you
Oh.
Twice, it's for the red dot.
One, two.
Just a laser pointer. That's, that's all I need. So, on First East, where this top arrow is, that will be, that will be an exit only. So that is, the only people who are gonna come out of that would be like staff or people that are at the boutique pulling out. Everybody's going to sippen to get a drink. The window is further down, so they'll pull back around to Third South. So they
Won't come out.
No, no.
The line curves around.
Yeah, right, the curled back arrows, so they'll come out on Third South.
The only people that are gonna come out on Third South are the people who have parked in the back, or the people who decided, who got in the line and then decided, oh, wait, never mind, I didn't wanna drink anyway. But if you're in line for a drink, you're going back out Third South.
If, if you go to, uh, two or three pages further, there's actually a diagram of the way that the queue would work. Well, I get, I guess you don't have all of them that's in our notes.
Go on the
No, probably not.
On the other way.
There, there's an additional one that is with our notes that actually shows how that would go through, and it's, I'd be glad to share that with you and actually give this to you so that you can see it. Uh, we've got it in our other notes, in our electronic notes. So if that'd be, would you like to have this?
John? Okay.
All right.
So moving on to the next topic, um, is the amended primary plat, preliminary plat for the Eagle Haven subdivision.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. The subject property in this case is located on the east side of Spanish Fork Parkway, just a little bit south of Maple Mountain High School. You've seen this in recent months when the, I think it was the first amended preliminary plat was approved to add land to the north side of what had been approved as the Eagle Haven master plan development a few years before. And with that approval, uh, there was adequate space for seven additional lots to be developed. This area here, on the north side of that street, being what was added to the area just south of that, that was the original Eagle Haven project. Uh, since the applicant received approval for those lots to be added and preliminary platform, um, incidentally, uh, to a site where the infrastructure, for the most part, is already built. Um, and I'll mention as well that there's, there's one existing home right there, uh, be cited on what's a, a planned lot in the project right there. Started saying a moment ago, the applicant, uh, since has decided that they would like to construct this part of the project, which now we're looking at phases two and three, the idea that he would like to have the approval amended, so as to be able to construct these seven lots in two phases. So when we talk about, uh, the sequence of phases, the originally approved part of the project for which all of the necessary infrastructure is currently in place, that's phase one. Uh, the applicant would like to develop four lots on the eastern side of the project here, uh, that is now being referenced as phase two, and the three remaining lots on the northwest corner of the project would be developed as what's being referenced as phase three. Does that make sense? Not terribly complicated, but a little bit unique and different.
So, Dave, I don't know if I remember correctly from there, was the road going out to the north, that connected road to the next lot up, was that in our previously approved plat? Have we shown that, that's, and would breaking that into a phase affect that going in?
It wouldn't need to affect it going in at all. And in fact, um, if you look at the recommended condition number four in staff's recommendation, which incidentally is to approve, uh, this proposed amendment to the preliminary plat, um, that's the result of considerable conversation that staff had with the applicant about trying to come up with a way that, um, provides assurance that that road does get constructed, or at least that the opportunity is available for the road to be constructed in the event, for example, should the property to the north develop before phase three of Eagle Haven develop, and should the development of that site necessitate a connection to the road that's finished in Eagle Haven, um, the way the condition reads, um, the applicant of Eagle Haven at this point in time would be required to at least dedicate an easement so that should somebody wanna, wanna enter that property and construct a road, that could be done at any point in time in the future likewise, um, in order for those three lots to be developed in the future as part of their own standalone recordable plat, the road would have to be developed when that happened. So, it's a matter as I see it of, you know, what might come first. I think it's pretty logical to think that the three lots get developed before the property to the north does, but, um, we, uh, we try to not miss opportunities to make sure that, um, at stages like this, we're looking down the road and trying to plan for needs, accounting for the idea that sometimes projects just stop, you know, maybe it's a change to the economy or whatever else, and, um, for that reason, uh, maybe some others as well. We think getting the easement to be able to have that road constructed, should that be necessary in the future, that that's an important thing to do right now.
Um, are there any concern, can we look at the, at the plat map? Um, are there any concerns about number, is that twenty-six, where, how narrow the frontage is to the road there?
We had conversations about that with some of our public works folks, because there are different things that have to fit in that space. Um, water meters, occasionally some communication equipment. Am I missing, what am I missing? Yeah. Power to the lot, different things like that. But in fact, in this case, there's a little bit more room maybe than what you're used to seeing because these are, um, larger lots. And those lots, I believe, on the corner, um, well, in excess of fifteen thousand square feet. Can't quite make it out, but I wanna say they're eighteen thousand square feet, you know, these twenty-sixes.
So it's more than a
Maybe Byron, you could give us a dimension, you know, at the, at the cul-de-sac of what their actual frontage is. Um, we, you do need room for a driveway, and then there's other stuff as well that needs to be there. Some stuff can go in the driveway.
But it, it meets engineering standards fine.
They've recommended that it be approved this way.
Okay. There's a, there's a home in my neighborhood that has a, a really narrow opening just, that looks just like that, and, uh, they make it work. It's awkward, but they make it work. I wouldn't wanna live there, but they do great.
I have to say this also, that, this is an occasion. Three subdivision proposals, all are one fifteen. I mean, what? That, that has certainly never happened before.
It, it's what we want more of.
And they conform with our master plan.
Yeah, exactly.
I like it.
All consistent with the general plan. Mr. Chairman, this is not a public hearing because the zoning's already in place.
Right.
Like I said, staff's recommendation is that it be approved based on that finding and subject to those four conditions.
So, just to reiterate, we already approved everything, uh, we've already approved the bottom two-thirds, and it's just that top, the top layer of homes, lots that we, that are just being added to what we were
You're close, but no.
Oh.
What you see there has been approved.
Oh.
One of the requirements with the preliminary plat approval is that if an applicant wants to develop a site in phases, they have to submit a phasing plan for the planning commission and city council to review. So, um, originally, the anticipation had been that these seven lots would be developed all in concert, same time as part of one recordable plat, um, because the applicant wants to split it, and it's, uh, it's noted here, um, with some, some icons that are kinda hard to see, but the applicant wants to phase it, and really, that's why it's on your agenda tonight, is for consideration for approval as a, you know, a phased subdivision.
Thanks for the repeat. Now my, now my head is wrapped around.
Admittedly, it's unique. This is not, and, um, I'd say it's, it's a nominal change, too. We wanna make sure we get some things down the right way, but.
And our easement, in case, like you say, the world goes crazy, we're not building that easement's gonna make it so you still get the road through there.
Get the road through there, or maybe even, I could see, I need to just get water or sewer and power through there at some point, you know, whatever, whatever the need might be.
Okay.
If the lot to the north develops first, though, for these three, it's just an easement. So it'd be on that developer to connect it, and then it'd be like a pioneering agreement, they'd have to pay back to develop those three lots.
Precisely. That's exactly it.
All right. Are you ready for a recommendation?
Yeah, well, let me ask everybody if they have any more questions.
Okay. I'm ready. Let's go.
Does anybody else have any other comments for staff?
No.
Okay, well, then I will, I will accept the, the motion.
All right. I move that, uh, we recommend the reapproval of the Eagle Haven subdivision amended, uh, plan, uh, based on the, uh, findings and subject to conditions.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, now we go into a series of Title XV amendments. This is a public hearing. We'll again reiterate, for those of you who have hung around this long, that we're going to public hearing. We're gonna, there's a time limit, um, three minutes. If the commissioners ask follow-up questions, and that can go on longer, but your initial comments for, for three minutes. Um, what is the first one? It's on the other page. Hillside of standards?
Yes, thank you. Um, the applicant has been working with city staff now for a few months on changes that they've proposed to standards that the city originally adopted seven or eight years ago. Um, we had noticed development happening in the Oak Ridge Cove development that caused it some alarm relative to, uh, hillsides that were being modified to allow for homes to be constructed in a, an existing approved subdivision. At that point in time, city staff, um, engaged a, a consulting firm. We went to some lengths to try to make sure that we were using best practices to, to come up with standards that made sense. Um, I wouldn't say that Spanish Fork has ever been, um, overly restrictive, um, or an overly difficult community to develop in. I mentioned that, I think we've always tried to be rational and reasonable, and that was certainly part of the approach that was taken. In terms of drafting the standards that are in place today, um, just about we have a little bit more history. Incidentally, those changes came about with, uh, some events that happened in some other communities on the Wasatch Front, North Salt Lake, had some issues with development failures on hillsides, not necessarily comparing that to any sites in Spanish Fork, but I do wanna mention that this absolutely has been a subject of concern for city staff. The idea, um, from a couple of different, different perspectives, that certain properties in town need certain consideration before they are made available for development. Um, the hillside regulations that we have in place today are primarily there to make sure that property is protected when development occurs, both property that exists previous to development happening and the property that, you know, is the subject of a particular development project. Um, aesthetic concerns certainly are another, uh, thing that was given considerable airtime, as we talked about, hillside development requirements and what, what they should be, what they should look like, and that sort of a thing. Um, I am not a geotechnical engineer, uh, not an engineer of any type, and, uh, will leave technical questions and issues for folks that we use as the city when those questions arise. I think we, we have access to some very capable people. Um, that being said, I also happen to believe that, um, with the right engineering being employed, you can probably build just about anything wherever you really want to. And, yeah, that was given some thought as the standards that are in place now were developed, as drafts were ran by the planning commission and city council. Um, and, uh, nonetheless, uh, that wasn't the only thing that was considered when the standards were put together. Again, there were other things, um, that affect the community beyond just whether or not a structure has, uh, the ability to maintain its integrity over a period of time. Given the nature of the conversations that we had back then and some that we've had since, um, in a community where, and we really don't have hillside development on the scale that some other communities on the Wasatch Front have, I think here, to try to put it in some context, as best as I've been able to think about it at least, we're probably talking about properties that surround what we call the river bottoms, you know, kind of the, the slopes down into or, or up above, depending on how you look at that. And then properties up around the, uh, the gun club or the, uh, irrigation reservoir. Outside of that, in our annexation policy, and with what's currently in town, there's really not much to where slopes of the particular, um, angle, you know, would come into play and these standards would apply. Nonetheless, what's proposed now, um, I believe you're aware of this, but just to point it out, this, um, is proposed with a particular site in town in mind, but of course, with any changes to Title XV, those apply citywide, and that is a consideration certainly the staff keeps top of mind. Um, the development review committee is hesitant to make any recommendation that these be approved. That's putting it gently, I believe, but we wanted to get this in front of you and potentially in front of the city council sooner than later, understanding that there's an applicant now, they're spending money, they have consultants involved. I think we as staff certainly are looking for direction from you and/or the city council, um, with the idea that if this is something that, that you're inclined to entertain, then we'd go back and we would, um, do it, I would say, a deep dive, as deep as necessary with, uh, the folks that currently review plans that even conform to our existing hillside development standards, um, a geotechnical consulting firm that, that we as a city retain and use. We'd ask them to go through these, you know, the fine-tooth comb, um, and to give us their recommendation on the technical aspects of it. Uh, we might also, um, look at some of the, the less technical and maybe more aesthetic aspects, you know, maybe like maximum wall heights and things like that, just to try to make the proposal as palatable as possible. But even before we did that and started to expend resources on that, we wanted to get, like I've said, your thoughts and the city councils. Um, the applicant's provided quite a bit of material, um, that we've shared with you. Um, we can go through that tonight, maybe briefly as well. Uh, Mary Martin in her office also has been able to do some, I think, for me, useful to scale imagery that that I'd suggest we maybe take a minute to take a look at relative to kind of the subject property, the case in point for what we're talking about tonight. And then we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have of us. But as much as anything like I've said, we're really looking for direction from you tonight on what to do next.
Okay, thank you. In the past, when we've had Title fifteen amendments that have kind of targeted one development, we've had to be two separate issues on the, on the agenda. Like we will talk about what's going on and then the adjustment to the Title fifteen that would be required for that to go forward. This has been kind of compiled with, is there a reason for that? Just because it's specific to this, it's a, it's a citywide change, but we're tying it to one specific, three or four specific lots tonight. Is there, is there a reason for that?
We aren't tying this tonight to a specific site.
Well, we have, I'm just saying we have in what we've been presented.
Oh.
There is.
Okay.
We have all this stuff that I'm assuming came from the gentleman back there that is kind of a reflection of the, of one specific example of what this will affect. But we still, it'd be a citywide change.
Yes, I appreciate that. I'm coming from the perspective of we don't have a proposed text amendment on your agenda with a proposed subdivision that is relying on that text amendment for approval before it can move forward like, you know, we've done at times in the past. And I appreciate the applicant, you know, putting the effort that they've put into, into helping, you know, provide some additional color as to what, in their minds, these changes would lead to for the property that they're interested in developing. So in that regard, yeah, I think that is our, our case in point. But another thing that we would want to do before making a recommendation that this be changed is to look at the city from a broader perspective. For example, we've had slope analyses done of the city as a whole as, as one of the exercises that we went through before the existing standards were adopted. We'd want to take a look at that as well, just understand what, what that scope of impact would be if things are changed. So, to be clear, there's no specific development proposal on the table tonight connected with this. But we certainly do have, we're going to, we're going to focus on one site that's on the north side of River Bottoms Road. That's what the applicant's interested in, I think it is a good example.
So usually when we have a, a, a hill sites, yeah, I guess I'm trying to figure out what it is we're, what we're needing to focus on tonight. We don't have a red line for the hillside standards. We have, attached, we have a hill, what the current hillside standards are. And we have not city staff, but we have an applicant that is proposing hillside standard revisions? Or is it, or is it more like we're having an applicant come and say, this is my wonderful development and here's changes that I think need to happen to this, to this hillside ordinance and here's why? How's that, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out exactly what we're trying to, are we giving feedback tonight? Are we, we're not voting on a Title fifteen ordinance change?
Great question, there are a few questions there. So this has been advertised and it's on your agenda for you to hold a public hearing tonight.
Right.
If you do that.
But usually we see red lines.
There is one, I'll touch on that as well. And it's, it's easy to hide among what we have provided.
I didn't see that, yeah.
Because it's pretty simple. But I want to just finish the one thought, sorry. You have a lot of different options tonight as to how you might want to proceed. If you do hold a public hearing, then you could make a recommendation at that point that we go to the City Council either for approval or denial. You certainly could continue the item. If you have any inclination to continue it, I think it'd be really helpful for you to give as much reasoning and direction as to why maybe that's happening unless maybe you just want time to think about it. But if there are things you have in mind, we'd love to know what those are so we can prep before we come back again.
Yeah, okay, so now I'm seeing here Exhibit A, it's just not colored, it's in black.
You're looking at Exhibit A and I'm looking at the memo.
Oh.
The Community Development Memo. It's the October four oh one on page two, slopes C.
Memo.
What we have highlighted kind of there underlying.
I saw the yellow.
The black and white, it doesn't jump out, yeah.
Yeah.
That's specifically what precludes a significant part of the centric property tonight from being eligible for.
Thank you.
But that's existing language.
Well, and then on page seven, it looks like, page seven says current ordinance, this is Exhibit A. And then under current ordinance, it says proposed change. And that, and that proposal comes from our applicant and I assume his engineers or, and not, not city staff, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And I'm not saying that that's not credible, I'm just wanting to clarify.
Thank you for helping, yes.
Okay.
It's important to have those things straight, for sure.
I have looked at the proposed change, by the way, done, I have done my homework, I was just trying to figure out where and what you're wanting. That's the, our first item of business is talking about proposed change or do we hear a presentation from a?
Yeah, are we going to handle, I assume these go each topic handled separately, probably a separate public hearing? Because I don't think, I think you gentlemen are all here for this topic, correct? So no one's here to talk about ham radios?
Senses?
Yeah, what's up with that? Sensing standards are exciting.
They are.
Dave, do you have anything else to say, should we open up the public hearing?
Uh, how would we like to proceed?
Staff, I mean, Commissioner, do you have any questions for Dave or staff?
Is this, is a public hearing scheduled or advertised?
We've advertised for a public hearing, yes.
Oh, okay, yeah. Just one more clarification from what you said. Okay, so for public hearing, for what our public hearing is for is for the proposed change that's on our Exhibit A, page seven on the memo. I, right? Okay, and you just told us that, that the city staff is not comfortable with changing what the current standard is. But if we are comfortable, if we are comfortable with the proposed change or with any change, that we can recommend that to the City Council. And, but it would be good, I think it would be good to have the cities' geotechnical engineer and consultants look at it as well. That's what you're recommending.
They're saying in any case, that would happen in, if we have changes or it's, the language would be rewritten by us. The city would engage somebody to, like a geotech or.
Right.
To do some analysis, the developed language would go in.
Okay.
Right?
I think both of you are right, exactly, that's.
So, on reading through what has been proposed by these folks that are here tonight, I don't feel qualified to make a decision on whether those are reasonable or not. To me, they seem reasonable, but what do I know? You know, I'm sitting here in a chair making a decision on something that I'm really not an engineer. I don't, I'm not qualified to understand, let alone to make a decision on exactly what those changes, well, I know what they chang- they're cited. And I'm anxious to hear what they've got to say and the presentation because that'll give me a greater understanding of it. And then, I think I'm in complete agreeance with what's been said. And that is, is that if staff is not comfortable with making these changes, because these changes, if they go into Title fifteen, are going to be incorporated for the entire city, not for one, one subdivision. And so in that regard, I want to know from staff, from our engineering staff, why they are uncomfortable with what these engineers, these engineers have been very forthcoming. Looks like a very comprehensive report to me. Like I said, I'm not an expert in geotechnical studies or anything else. So I, I feel like I don't have the full picture of why this would be questioned. And so if we're going to look at all angles of, of changing the city's Title fifteen, then give me both sides.
You want to hear the counter argument?
Yeah, I do. Yeah, I, in other words, both sides should be heard. I am grateful to the guys that are here tonight that they have put down, that, this has taken a lot of time, effort and money to prepare. And I think that it's very well done. And it seems precise to me in reading it, but again, I don't have that expertise to say that this is good or bad or indifferent. I've never been an excavation contractor, I don't know exactly anything, I don't know anything about retention and all of that other than what I've seen work and what I have seen that has been a failure. So, having said all of that, if there's a question about what these engineers are saying, tell me what it is. And rather than, all of us in this room, with the exception of maybe some of these guys back here, I would like to hear the reason why this shouldn't be accepted. I mean, we hire consultants all the time to do exactly this. He's hired a consultant to do it. So tell me why this is not a good document and why it shouldn't be a, a, a change in our Title fifteen. Knowing that this is going to be used, well, is this a good document to use or not?
Commissioner Menon Hall, I can speak from professional experience when cities, projects, hire engineering firms. Two different engineering firms can often come back with opposite recommendations on projects. And so I think that we proceed with caution and not take one group as the final authority, particularly for such a big decision.
I agree, and that's, that was my point.
There's one other thing that I feel like I need to mention, just by way of where staff's coming from. And I mentioned earlier that I really appreciate that we have a resource in our office that can, can help us get a feel on this site at least, given what the applicant's proposed as to what the development likely would look like. These are based on contours that we've been given, can you remind me of where these came from?
Yeah, so these are from the city's River Bottoms contours data that we have available. So this image right here is showing the existing topography and how that, it's an eight foot wall right now. How an eight foot wall and the homes would sit on the site. And this is to scale based on what the applicant has given us. If you want to go to the next one, same thing, just a different angle. And then this is showing the proposed slope, the changes that the applicant is proposing. So you can see it's, it's somewhat of a significant change from what we have now. And then if you want to go to the next image, that shows the same, this one. So they'd be flattening out that middle piece at the bottom of the homes and then stepping up pretty steeply and then evening out again to meet the road.
The, the flat, the flat bling part, is that cement?
No, that'd be grass or.
Retaining wall, that's, that's, that's probably backyard that is being retained.
Fifty feet?
You'll have a chance to speak in a, in a little while. We'll lay you up then.
Okay.
This was helpful for me, just to get a feel, and I believe this is a real feel. The contours that we're working with here are from two thousand and eight survey. I don't think the site's been changed or disturbed really at all since then. And this is completely, I think, subjective in terms of visually, is this what you as, not necessarily the land use authority in this case, but you know, the city's kind of gatekeepers on land use issues that, you know, are you comfortable with this? Are you not? You certainly see development happen on hill sites that are steeper than this, that has a greater, you know, visual impact on a community than what we're seeing here. But at the same time, the homes that exist to the west of these indeed are part of why the current standard reads the way that it does. Not wanting to see homes built on this very hill at this location or elsewhere along that ridge where these slopes exist. That, that's what is being proposed to be changed tonight.
Dave, did, Dave, did the homes to the west have issues with any kind of structural issues?
None that I'm aware of at all. And I think, you know, I would maybe even echo, at least in a certain way, what Commissioner Menon Hall was saying. At least by way of, I don't think this is a technical issue. I think whether it requires a more substantial engineering solution than perhaps what the applicants are proposing tonight or whether what they're proposing is adequate. I think there's a way to make it so that homes can, can be built on a hillside like that and have that function appropriately. Our review, you know, if we get to the point of investing in a more technical review would be to make that determination and, and give you and the City Council that information to consider. I think this is much more of a community character kind of a question than anything else, that's my, my thought.
Could you go to like Google Maps and use the street view from River Bottoms Road looking up at these? So we can see like where the existing homes are and just that point of view. Right? So it's those lots, is, is, is there a street view from River Bottoms Road or is it not available?
I have a picture of it. Oh, you mean street view?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Scroll to the left, yeah, you can see those homes down there.
Can you move us down to those homes over there?
I vote for a field trip to go out on the golf course and view them from the golf.
Second.
All in favor?
You know those, those ones on the west? They, they have the most maybe a five or 10 foot backyard.
If that.
One thing though.
So we, no one can hear you on the TV, so we'll call you up in a minute and then please keep those lots available. We'll call you up in a minute, we just, we have a TV audience that has to be able to hear what we're saying.
Okay, now, yes, you're going the right direction. Can you go past the home, the beautiful home that's there facing River Bottoms Road? So we can see on the other side, yeah, what's our view of the homes that are up on the hill on the other side? That's great, thank you.
A home that's down low is not part of, was it part of the existing development up above? It was there before, wasn't it?
I built that house.
You did? That's, is that your house?
No, I moved it, but I built that one.
You built that one?
It was his house.
So it was not part of the existing development above? Was it platted then?
Well, it was.
What, how about, how about, I'm getting the thumbs down, I'll, I'll address that in a minute.
And maybe I can, I can go through some of the history. Yeah, so this property, I don't know if the current owner is still the Hearst family, kind of.
No, Hearst, I bought it from the Hearst and built it past my in-laws.
So, all of the homes that are immediately to the north of this site were on, are on, are on property that had been owned by the Hearst family for some time. A developer named Dave Olson in the late nineteen nineties developed the vast majority of the site. What we're looking at here and the part of, of that property that the one home that's down below that was just discussed was located on, that was all part of attractive land. That was all part of one development and what we're talking about now is a remnant of that. That was all part of one development and what we're talking about now is a remnant of that, so. Never platted as part of a subdivision.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Something the applicant has some things they'd like to go over? Well, access on applicant, it's just members of the public would like to.
I'd like to go to the street view of those few homes there that we were looking at. Don't have any backyard and everything.
Above or below, John?
Below.
Uh, below, down on River Bottoms Road. It's, the reason is, is just to give an idea of what is currently there and maybe the things that we're talking, I mean, obviously we have similar issues with the property that is there, but the ones that are, yeah, towards the north there, to the east, whichever you want to call it, that you know, those, those have little to no backyard.
Oh, I just had a thought. Farther down, way farther down River Bottoms Road, there are homes that are on the, that are really close to the hillside. And it'd be nice to see the, the back, like the River Bottoms view of the back of those homes. Do you know what I'm talking about?
Down to Tree Road and look up that way.
Down, kind of by the Tree Road?
Yep.
Poplar Lane?
Those homes. You have to know that those were built up on top of the hill more or less.
Yeah, how much can you see from, you can see, I, I feel, I feel like when I'm down there, I can see the, the back of those homes though.
Best view is from the Tree Road, Poplar Lane. And go south on Poplar Lane a little bit and then look back.
They must have a shallower slope set back farther?
In that development, there are two down there. I think this is Pioneer Ridge, is where the Pioneer Cemetery is.
Yeah, that's the area I'm talking about.
The slope, the slope was not encroached upon when that development was done back in two thousand and nine or ten.
Oh, so.
So the homes are up above.
On the bench.
And it might be helpful to look.
The one that's in the trees there, you can see their retaining wall peeking through the trees.
Yeah.
I think the main thing I like, I, I, and besides the slope, the thing that I like about these that were done well is the elevations, like the view of those homes from the back are beautiful and add to the aesthetic of our River Bottoms. And I don't want to, anyway, it's a, it's a different aesthetic than the one, than what's up being proposed, in the area being proposed. I'm not sure what's, I haven't seen a picture of what the back would look like. But you get what I'm saying.
And I just, I think to try to paint as clear of a picture as we can, the lots that we were just looking at, those homes, those of a public street out in front of them, a twenty-five-foot deep front yard, and that's hillside that, at least for the most part, was not, or that's, that's property that was not part of a hillside. This is what we're talking about here.
This is a different thing.
You know, where the city installed a guard rail a few years ago because we were worried about the steepness of the slope here and that type of a thing. I, the drop off here is
It's a whole different story.
It's distinct from what.
Right, it's a different, but we are talking about two different things here. We're talking about a slow ordinance and we're talking about a, about a city character and aesthetic, correct?
Um, I think, I think the question of character is probably the most important thing for the planning commission to, to consider here. Again, I'm no more of an expert than Commissioner Menon Hall about, you know, what can work from a technical design perspective, but what are you comfortable letting something, somebody try to do, or where are you comfortable letting people at least potentially put homes? And what does that look like? Are you comfortable with that? I sound like maybe trying to, to lead you in a direction. Again, staff, we don't think it's appropriate to, to support a change when it's still a pretty fresh ordinance. But if you guys see value in, in changing the ordinance to allow for this to develop, we will be on board immediately and we'll just try to execute as best as we can on that.
Shawna, there's a rear elevation.
Oh, there is rear elevation. Oh, I didn't see that before. Okay. All right. That's my last question.
Okay, we'll open this up to public hearing. Please come up, address it from the podium, state your name. Remember we have a, kind of a time limit, we don't want to get too late at night.
I'll be as quick. My name's Scott Nielsen. I'm the owner of the property. And I guess the reason for this, I, I, I built the original house that was down below and I bought the property from my in-laws when I first got married twenty years ago, twenty-one years ago. And, and then I deeded, the property went back, deeded back to the family and then I bought it back again. Anyways, won't get into that. Well, in two, in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, I was approached by a number of developers of custom home builders from Mapleton, Draper and different areas. And then especially as we moved into twenty twenty, about purchasing the property. And at the time, I just didn't feel like it was right to sell the property. And I had the same questions that David had because I was like, well, can you guys build on it? And they were just like, oh yeah, absolutely. And they wanted to purchase the property from me. I had, I had bona fide offers to purchase, purchase the property. Well anyways, and around twenty twenty-one, I thought, well, you know what, I'll just look into this myself. And so I went to Apex Engineering who's here in town and they, and I went, I wouldn't have started this if I didn't think it could come to fruition. So I went to Apex Engineering in town and I sat down with Richard Hatfield, who's an engineer. I said, Richard, can this happen? And he says, he looked at it, he looked at the contours of the property, he said, yes. And so I contracted with him to do it. And then through this process, it's been a couple of years, went to the city and the city had some concerns. And then that's where I, you see the geotechnical report in there. I went and paid for that to be done. And then I went to other, because I was going to do, develop it myself. I went to other, another engineer that I had met through another real estate agent. We'll speak to you here in a minute. And so I met with Mr. Chung, who's also an engineer, and multiple other engineers on my part to design what you see in front of you now. And so from the very, from the very beginning, if I, if I didn't think it was plausible, or if I had, these engineers had told me no, because they told me no, they told, I guess, I guess if you pay them money, but I, I just said, hey, can this, you're right, minds change real quickly. I said, can this happen? Can this be feasible? And they all said, yes. And with these proposed homes that we're talking about, the, the other homes along the west hillside there don't have retaining walls. We will have retaining walls. We're going to have pickleball courts, it's going to be concrete, they'll have backyards, as opposed to no backyard. We're considering, we're going to put in a half a million dollars worth of retaining walls to ensure that there's, that there's no movement on these homes, that they're solid and so on. And I understand, you know, Dave's been very forthright. I understand exactly where the city's coming from as well. And we're not really that far off from the three to one slope as it is. And so that's where I'm at. And I've had, I've owned the, I built the house down there thirteen years ago, then we moved up by the reservoir. I live across the street from Mr. Clayson here, but I, 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 I still have that two acres. And so they're designed for half acre lots from the top, so. Any questions that you might have? Anyways, that's, that's the deal, just quick and fancy of where I'm coming from. And as Commissioner Menon Hall brought up, yeah, it's been considerable financial, you know, from my end to come up with what I've come up with. I wouldn't have done it if I didn't think it was going to be able to work. But I understand your position as well to do what's right and best for the city as well. I understand that as well, so.
So you're not, oh, this, so you're not coming to us like, pie in the sky, let's throw it and see what happens. It's going to happen, this is great.
No, as a matter of fact, previously I came in and met with one of the engineers who's not here anymore, Michael Clark, because I had some questions with him and he, he said, yeah. But from his perspective, he wanted to, he called one of the, the engineering firm that the city uses and we spoke to that, that engineering firm as well. And they said, yeah, we don't have a problem with it, we want to see it. But based upon the slope that you're presenting to us, we don't think that that would be an issue. And so I thought, okay, well then let me move forward, which I did at the time. And that's when I hired another engineer. There's been multiple. Because one was Apex Engineering to, to do the plat, and the other one was the structural engineers for the homes that we would be built, on the homes, or the, you know, the, the amount of concrete, rebar, all that kind of stuff. And so I hired a structural engineer to, you know, give me that part of it. And so. Anyway, I don't know if that answered your question, Shawna, or not, but that's where we're at.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else want to speak?
My name's Bo Chung. I'm Scott's engineer, developer and builder. So I, I see it from all perspectives. And actually Scott pulled me out of retirement. So, but I'm glad to be back, so. Anyway, I'm here for the, the technical aspect of, of the change or, or whatever to the hillside ordinance. We've, as Scott said, we've, you know, I, I designed the, the wall. All the home, the structure, I've got the geotech showing soil pressures, bearing pressures. We, we have everything we need and that retaining wall, that's actually five hundred feet long. And he intends, even though the, no one's really looked at what the actual slope is until I looked at it a week ago and it's right at three to one. So essentially Scott's properties are within, I, that one eleven by seventeen, to verify my findings, I had Apex to use their GPS, yeah, that one. And it's, it's thirty-two point five percent slope, which is definitely under the current city ordinance. However, we decided that we, this, this is important and for the city. My background is, I, I just did federal work. And the technical spec on the, you know, on the, the change and everything, that's a federal spec that I've used a lot in my career. And so I rewrote it to conform some, you know, to what the city may like. And I took this, my stand not as his, his developer and engineer, but as a representative for the benefit of the city. So I didn't look at it as a an outside perspective. I, I, I wrote the spec and also was involved with writing the, the change there from a, a neutral position. He said, well, you're representing Scott, but I didn't take it that way. I, in fact, a lot of my time is donated. I'm not charging anything to Scott and, you know, this, this is all volunteer for me. And of course, you know, we'd like to see it. Right now, I've got to, you know, we, we have the evidence to show that it's, for his property, it's not required because it falls within the current ordinance. However, me as a citizen, I'm, and an engineer, I'm willing to, you know, help the city go through the process of if you want to update or make the, the specification for hillside ordinance tighter. I mean, I put in, you know, the, in, if you read it, the very last paragraph, I put in there, there has to, you have to excavate, I mean, backfill in two-foot lifts, compact to a ninety percent proctor, which is a term used in, in the density and the compaction of the soil. For like buildings and roads, they require ninety-six percent proctor. A hundred percent, of course, is the natural ground, you know, that's, it's, it's consolidated in and so forth. So that's a hundred percent. In the city ordinance, it will be a ninety percent. And this, and the engineering and, you know, development and so forth, they can require a density test if they, if they desire, which is, you know, you have a, a professional engineering testing company come out and actually test the proctor or the compaction and the density of, of this, the backfill. And so behind that wall, you, you know, this is all natural. This isn't a draper. I live in Draper and I was out of town, but seeing that those, those homes, well, the developers just piled backfill back there to get it up to, to grade and there are basically no compaction. And, you know, so this is all on, on natural ground. The, the foundation of that home, there's no fill. It's, of course, since it's on, it's all excavated. I just, we designed it in order to have everything natural on the natural surface, the soils. And the, really the backfill that's occurring here is only the backyard. And instead of having a five-foot backyard, it's like those west, those west properties, this is a forty to fifty-foot backyard that'll have, and that'll have, each one of them will have a pickleball court. So that's got to be pretty substantial. And the aesthetics, you know, DRC, you know, Dave, their committee, they said, well, that's very important. Well, we, intention we had already was to, when we pour the wall, you know, you have like the stamped concrete, well, it's inside the form. It's, it's an additional, you know, to cause it to be stamped. And then, of course, the, we thought originally we were going to bring the wall down more and it was going to be twenty feet high. But we, we engineered it where we got a forty to fifty-foot back, backyard and with only about an eight or nine-foot wall. So it's substantially, it's more than half of what we originally designed for. And so, and then, and then as far as, you know, kids, you know, spraying graffiti and everything up in there, as you see in the proposal, it'll all be coated with an anti-graffiti coating paint. And it's very easily washed off with a, which the owners would have to wash it off, but at least it's going to be very easily maintained and that won't be an issue. I mean, that won't be a concern. Yeah, which is a, a big concern. Because you got the golf course right there and there's River Bottoms Road and, you know, you want that wall to look. But it's not going to, at eight to nine foot, eight to nine feet high, it's not even going to be really noticeable as opposed to a twenty-foot high wall. So if, if we were to do the twenty-foot, you know, of course it would come more further on the downward side, you know, and then we'd have to. But everything worked out where aesthetically it's going to be beautiful. The views are going, you know, Dave and his staff, you know, they just kind of put some boxes there for the homes, but there's decks. And we went to DRC last week, the fire chief, he was concerned about, you know, getting up to the back. And I said, well, we're going to be putting stairways in back of each property on, on the backside of the retaining wall so they can, you know, go up the backside on River Bottoms Road. And they can also come from the front side, so.
Mr. Chung, we've exceeded our time limit by a bit. If you have some key points you'd like to bring up, I'd love to hear them, but if not, if you're wrapping up, that'd be great.
It's all there in the proposal. And if you have any questions, I can, I just wanted to give a little brief.
No, I appreciate that. That's very good. We may, I'm sure someone may have some points we want to ask questions on later. We'll call you back up if we have questions. Thank you. Does anybody else, Gents or Jackie, do you have comments you want to make on this topic?
Hi, Gents Nielsen. So I've been working with Scott on this project. I, I don't have a lot of technical information. All I want to do is just clarify that. You know, you've got two considerations here. One is, can this be done safely? And the other is, do you want to change the policy that's currently in place? What we're trying to do is show you that it can be done safely, even according to the city's consultant, the engineer. How do you say their name? I G E S? Anyway, safety, we don't think will be the problem. The question is, is there a will to change the policy, which may need to be changed a little bit? So the group here is really hoping for just a chance to get before the city council to see if they're willing to change their policy. That's what this really boils down to, so. That's all I.
Thanks. Anything else? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Commissioners, do we have questions for any of the, or for staff or follow-up questions for any of the speakers? Commissioners, do we have questions for any of the, or for staff or follow-up questions for any of the speakers?
I have a question. Can we clarify that the grade listed here is lower than the grade listed in Title fifteen?
I think the grade listed here is different than, it's been measured differently than how we established.
Okay. So this conflicts with the city's data?
Correct, yeah. Necessitating the change that we're talking about, yeah. But for that, we wouldn't be here.
Yeah, that was going to be my question for, for Scott was i- i- if Mr. Chung's report had this as a thirty-two point five percent slope, why, why are we trying to amend the Title fifteen?
Originally that was, um, Apex Engineering. I'm not an engineer, that was, uh.
They said you're over this slope requirement?
The, the, yes, we didn't come up with that. I didn't come up with that. That was Apex Engineering that came up with that. And what did we ran? We ran the CAD program, so.
So, so Mr. Chung's report, that, this is?
That's from Apex.
This is from Apex?
That's from Apex, correct, yes, sir.
I just calculated it and then I had to verify it actually yesterday.
And I didn't know when we're the other modern engineers, so I was going off of what engineers.
Okay. I just want, I, what I was getting at was if there's a reason, like maybe you needed to have the, for some other reason, might have been some other reasoning?
No, cause I, I was told that in, in coming to the, to the city, that, that there was going to be a slope issue, which, you know, there may or not, may or may not be. Cause I don't, you know, I'm not an engineer, but that's why we had, you know, things done. So, but that, that, that actually came from Apex Engineering, the original firm that I hired, um, from the get-go.
Okay.
And that's been done just in the last few days, is that right? That it was just confirmed yesterday?
Yes.
It was actually through DPS and so it's very accurate.
So.
So actually.
And that's come, my comment is I'm, my feel on it is I don't want to change for the city, um, the entire ordinance for some of these other places that have been talked about, um, for, for this one area. Um, I, if this could be verified, I don't know whose dime that would be at. But towards, this wasn't an issue and this, this could be something would be.
It could be approved.
Then it, then it wouldn't be an issue for us, cause it's already been, it already be going ahead.
For staff, this, this is very important to what we're talking about. Because this proposal is what is driving, do we want to change Title fifteen or not? If it's not needed, I'm not in favor of changing it. Is there something else that would drive an approval or a denial of this project?
I think it's very easy. I think, um, and it's your decision, of course, to make, but boy, it seems like this needs to be continued. And this is not a difficult thing to evaluate.
No.
We do that and it never comes back to you if what's been asserted here tonight is correct. It's that simple.
It doesn't?
No, it complies. The orders of years to get an amendment to Title fifteen. Now, if we want to address, if we don't think Title fifteen, the hillside setback is correct, we can look at that. I, I'm comfortable with what the city has there currently. Um, especially if, if Mr. Nelson could show that this is not, that this, you know, it meets that already, then he can move ahead with this project.
So that's something we can ask you guys to do is verify this?
That is a normal course of business for reviewing hillside development projects.
So in this particular, in this particular instance, you know, I think I would be in favor of tabling this part of, uh, the hills, well, tabling the idea of changing the hillside standards. If the only reason that we're doing it is to clarify this subdivision, I don't see a, a problem with leaving it the way it is until there's a time when it needs to be done. Does that make sense?
Tell there's a conflict.
And so I would, I would table, I would table, uh, the hillside amendment, uh, or changing the hillside standards and letting them proceed with staff to come up with a proposal for the subdivision.
They've made a proposal for the subdivision. We have that application.
We have it in, in hand, but they're not asking for that tonight.
They would love that ASAP, I think. So if indeed.
I kind of thought you might.
And maybe just a little bit more, um, background or information on the subject properties here. They are zoned R one twelve. So if an applicant can meet our current development standards, a development that's consistent with those standards will be approved. It's not subjective and there's not question about that. In this case that I'm aware of, the only issue has been compliance with the hillside development standards. And if that's not a problem, a development does get approved as long as they're compliant with other provisions. So I would echo what Commissioner Menon Hall, I think, has mentioned a couple of times now, it's what I mentioned earlier. Uh, I think we owe it to everybody to re-review this. And if it's a non-issue, um, there's no need to make a change and.
We'll certainly revisit it.
That's it.
Yeah. Uh, can I make a comment though? Couple of comments, maybe it's not, and I agree, I agree with everybody on that. As far as the aesthetics go, I feel like in that beautiful part of the River Bottoms, it's an opportunity to have it be, um, a more aesthetically pleasing finish than the, uh, back of the homes to the, is it west, to west? Um, and I actually don't, uh, this is just me, but I don't love the idea of a big humongous retaining wall and pickleball courts being like with the view from the golf course. Like if I think I want to see, kind of like what we're seeing, what we see way farther down, some really beautiful backs of the homes and, and that's it. But if it's a development by right, then I don't have any say on that. But do you know what I'm trying to say?
For me, I do. And the most important thing, I think, is what you just said. Um, if they can have a development approved by right, then, you know, you may be able to plead that they make a change or something like that, but anything that's not required.
Yeah.
By ordinance is not, they're not obligated to do anything.
Could I make it this?
But that's just, that's just me and it's not my, my property or my rights or anything like that. And the thing is, is that I love how the front looks and, um, anyway.
Let me make one comment. I think that we're talking about two things here. First of all, uh, the hillside issue. If, and if we table that for now, uh, then I would like to make some comments about the aesthetics of what it would look like from the River Bottoms. Scott and I, and I think that Mike can see this, this sight of the River Bottoms very well. And we'd like to see it look extremely inviting to everybody. And some of that can be done with landscaping and, and, uh, you know, the, the, the hard, fast wall doesn't have to look like that. If you can have some kind of, uh, some kind of ornamental stuff that goes around it, whether it be trees, bushes or whatever. Same thing with the houses. If you look at those houses, they're very stark and they're not very inviting the way they are right now, at least in my eye. I would like to avoid that, but that's another issue. And so I think that maybe what we should do is to make a motion, uh, or to move, have someone move, that we table the hillside, uh, this hillside issue. And then if, if we would like to make some suggestions to these guys, they would be miles ahead. Because I think that what Dave has tried, been trying to, to tell everybody here is that Spanish Fork City is a beautiful place. And Spanish Fork Canyon and the golf course is one of the most beautiful places that we have. And so to, we would like to see something that is a showplace rather than just a bare wall or just a four-story bit, you know, three-story building in this case. But you know, uh, there's something to be said about that. I like, uh, what has been shown here on the front. I, I echo that sentiment. And, you know, your elevations are only elevations for the back. And so pickleball courts, those kinds of things can be integrated. Um, there's, there's a lot of that stuff that goes into those homes that we see on, uh, on Poplar Lane. You just can't see them because they're up and their walls are hiding those. But most of those homes have, uh, features in their backyards that can't be seen from down below. And that could be worked into whatever they build. And so I think that if there's some of us that would like to make some suggestions there, I made a couple. But first, maybe we ought to table the hillside, uh, the hillside amendments or hillside standards for now. And, uh, and with the recommendation that, uh, they continue to work with staff on any other issues. Because if it's already zoned there, it's not going to come back to us. Is it Dave?
No.
No.
It's an approved, it's an approved use of the property.
Yeah, I think that's the next step is to confirm the slope.
One of my comments for staff is, do we have any for retaining walls? One of the, in, in the comments that Mr. Chung made, there is a comment about the five hundred feet of retaining wall. Personally, I don't like that aesthetic look. Is, do we have, being, these would be private lots. Does the city have any way to, like John was mentioning, uh, dictate landscaping that would break that up? Cause that's the difference, if you look at the ones we're looking at in Pioneer, by the Pioneer Cemetery, the trees are breaking up, the retaining walls that are there. First of all, they're different material, because they're, it's rock and it's more natural. They don't have their, the, they don't have the heights to retain in this, this, a place like this would. Do we have any ability to say so many feet without landscaping? Or you'd have to have landscaping to break up the look of that wall? Do we already have an ordinance along those lines or is it not addressed anywhere?
Yeah, we don't have any requirements, well, it's, uh, the construction of the wall itself, it's designed, anything about that or, uh, any way to screen the wall.
Right.
Off the appearance, that sort of a thing. Uh, I wish I could answer that differently, but we're just not moving there.
Moving forward, um, I'm going to address some more questions. What's that?
The reason why we designed it is because the city thought the slope was.
Sure.
We don't have to have the retaining, it was just for this purpose for the hillside, and so.
And I understood that, it just, it just brought that thought to my mind. Wonder if you had any way to control that?
We were very open, very flexible and we're not so rigid that we just gotta be this way or that way.
Right.
So we want to do whatever the city wants.
I also think if someone knows they're building or they're buying a hillside lot, that there might not be as much of an expectation for a large backyard, but to keep a natural, maybe have a smaller backyard, but.
I'm sure it'd be a trade-off between what you can sell the lot for.
Right.
Developing it, you know, where, where are you money at to do that?
Anyway, but that's.
Okay, um, I would entertain whatever motion.
I move that we table the Title fifteen amendment for the hillside standards and city staff work to confirm the slope at this property.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion will be tabled to a later date. The next Title fifteen amendment is our ham radio.
Commissioners, happy to be here tonight and hopefully can answer any of your questions regarding this. Um, the proposed ordinance is a balancing of the city's legitimate public safety and aesthetics interests in neighborhoods and with, with amateur radio. And then balancing the federal interest, there's a strong federal interest in encouraging amateur radio communications. Um, and to highlight that, I just want to read an excerpt from an FCC ruling that's kind of become the seminal, uh, legal authority for amateur radio. It, and it provides, "Local regulations which involve placement, screening, or height of antennas based on health, safety, or aesthetic considerations must be crafted to accommodate reasonably amateur communications and to represent the minimum practical regulation to accomplish the local authority's legitimate purpose." So that's from an FCC ruling back in nineteen eighty-five, but it's still the law today. I do want to highlight the city's, uh, safety concerns that we do have. On July third, two thousand twenty-three, there was severe windstorm and thunderstorm in the city. You might remember, it was the holiday weekend, it was a Monday. The severe windstorm had speeds up around seventy-nine, eighty miles an hour. And so I've been able to document through researching articles that were written about that time of that storm. During that windstorm, an existing amateur radio tower collapsed and it crashed into the public street. Fortunately, there were no pedestrians or cars. It did fall and, and damaged the owner's own recreational vehicle and the fencing, it broke through the fencing. But that to me presented, I guess highlighted our concern of having one near the property line that could fall into the public right-of-way. There's also the aesthetic concern that antennas should be able to fit reasonably within their neighborhood, locate them as far as possible from property lines and screened if possible. Those are some of our concerns that we have, mostly the safety and the aesthetics. So if we go to the nuts and bolts of the proposed ordinance, I want to just, uh, go through some of the highlights there. Number one is that they would be permitted uses in all zones. So like I said, we're trying to encourage or facilitate amateur radio operations as much as we can, balancing our public safety and aesthetic interests. So making them a permitted use in all zone definitely helps accommodate, uh, those, those uses. Also granting them a height of forty-five feet without any, uh, any additional reasonable accommodation or permit. So they can go up to forty-five feet, um, as a right. There, there would be a reasonable accommodation through a conditional use process if they desired more height. The setbacks provided would be fairly reasonable setbacks, you know, nothing like one times the height or one and a half times the height of the structure, but just a reasonable twenty-foot setback from neighboring property lines and a thirty-foot setback from the public right-of-way, um, we think would be reasonable. Also, I think this maybe goes without saying, but it's been an issue in the past that there would be no encroachment on, on property of another or on the public right-of-ways. Meaning you could not have any portion of the tower or its antenna encroach into property that's not under the ownership or control of the, of the owner. That to me is just a, a real property law concern. It has nothing to do with regulation, right? It's just, you can't use my property without my permission, a type of law. Also, there's provisions in the ordinance about keeping the safe clearances from the electric power lines and consistent, being consistent with the electrical code. Requiring a building permit if it's greater than twelve feet tall. I think that's just again, safety, if it's going to be a tall structure, then we need to make sure it is, is designed and built according to the design. And that it can withstand the wind loads that are imposed on that structure by an eighty mile per hour of wind. Also, no more than one amateur radio per lot or parcel. Uh, the materials need to be, again, an aesthetic concern of galvanized or non-reflective material and be installed in an inconspicuous installation as much as possible, as much as you can, a, a tall tower. And then there, some towers, including ones in town, have this feature that they, they lower or they retract or they nest in a position so that the antennas are not always extended. But those are only extended during the times they're transmitting or receiving signals. They're stored in their nested state. Now, those are kind of the general regulations, but to allow reasonable accommodations, a conditional use process is identified for additional height or, uh, a lesser setback if they can demonstrate, they can mitigate any of the negative effects that might come from, from those, uh, from needing that extra height or lesser setback. So things that they would, that the planning commission would consider, um, So things that they would, that the planning commission would consider, um, in granting a conditional use permit would be the impacts on, on safety, life, and property. Impacts on views and aesthetics, and they specifically call out the Wasatch Mountains, the Utah Lake. But maybe after tonight's discussion, maybe we could add in the text, uh, the view of the river bottoms. That's another scenic resource that we have. Let's see, um, the overall aesthetic quality of the neighborhood, the property values, based on a competitive market analysis or an appraisal, I think just, I've been in enough public hearings where you hear speculative testimony about, oh, it's going to hurt my property values. And I, I don't think that would be, uh, reliable enough to, to make a finding that there would be a negative property value impact. But if they could provide a professional's opinion through a market analysis or an appraisal, that would be worth considering. And then again, you, you evaluate it in, in light of the operator's need for additional height or less setback. It might be slight. It might be a foot or two more or something like that. Um, not many tens of feet higher. And so maybe the, they could mitigate a slight impact. Ways to mitigate could be things like greater setbacks for, for a larger tower. Say you have a larger lot, you can push that towards the center of the lot and get that farther away from the neighbors. That would be one way to mitigate the negative impacts of additional height. Foliage or, or other screening type, um, measures to take, to screen the antenna and the tower from view. Uh, having the retractable structure that I mentioned before is, is, is good for most of the time while it's, it's being stored and only antenna array is extended when it's being used. Or if it's adjacent to land that's maybe likely to remain undeveloped, say it's, it's adjacent to uh, public lands, for example, or, or schools or government, uh, government-owned lands, that, that could be another reason why maybe you could encroach into the setback or have a taller height. Then finally, there is a provision about abandonment. If, if it's not used for two years, then the, the permit would be deemed abandoned. There is an exception to that as well for like sabbatical or military assignments, volunteer assignments, religious trips, things like that, where they could have a two-year, um, exception. So that is the draft of the ordinance. I, I pulled it from other, uh, local jurisdictions that have similar ordinances and then I made some changes that I thought would make it be even more defensible under the federal law. Do you have any questions about the proposed draft?
How, how do you determine if it's being used or not?
That's a good question. Uh, I've had to rely on the owners telling me that I use it. They, they like to do it, at least this owner told me he likes to do it in the evening, like nine, ten o'clock. And maybe that's another consideration, like once it's dark, it's less conspicuous. People don't see it as well. He, he seems to get a better signal that time of day, so that's why.
I'm just curious that you, if there's a, someone doesn't use it for two years, how do, how does one know if.
Oh, I see, during that time.
Yeah, yeah.
Not just the, for the nesting issue, but.
Yeah.
Um, that's a good question. I don't know.
Just curious. I don't know a lot about ham radio.
If you've never seen the antenna extended, I don't know.
It would have to be a self.
Maybe a self-report and they come in and say, hey, I, I'm getting deployed. I need to go, you know, please don't void my permit while I'm gone. So I don't know. Beyond that, it's probably mostly a self-report, I would think.
And then you said there's, I was looking for, I don't see it. Normally these things are a certain height when they're like stored and they go, they extend out and up when they're in use.
Yeah.
Some can, not all.
Some can. Yeah, I don't think all do.
Most don't.
One I'm familiar with, it's.
The one I walk through, that I walk by all the time, looks like it has like one or, or two or three stages that it can go up. It's probably twenty foot and then it goes, it looks like it goes maybe to forty.
Okay. One I'm aware of, I think, is, is fifty-five feet tall when it's fully extended, but I think it drops down to forty-five feet. So they may be different. Some that don't telescope or, or nest at all and some that do, and some that do a lot. I don't know.
But this just had forty-five feet, I think you said was the max.
You're allowed forty-five as a right.
Okay.
If you want to go higher, it would be a conditional use permit.
And that's figured from their extended, that whatever would be retractable or not.
I think it would be the max height that they would, that they would extend it to. So even if it's just the temporary while they're using it, I still think you would.
That's still.
They would have to get the conditional use permit.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Looks very thorough.
Thank you. We'll open up our public hearing. Seeing none, we'll close our public hearing. Do any of the commissioners have any other comments?
I don't think so.
That's great.
Have a motion?
I move that we recommend the, uh, Title fifteen amateur radio antennas ordinance be recommended to the city council.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Change passes. Our final, well, our final topic in this is our fencing standards.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I'm going to get out of the way really quickly and let Ms. Martin take over. I just want to point out that, uh, this is before you tonight, at the direction of the city council who asked us to look at our fencing standards because of, um, a couple of issues with specific lots in town. The standards have been crafted and tried out. Their applicability throughout the community and, um, that's relative to the fencing standards. There are also included with this two other changes, one of which I ask that you ignore or not include any recommendations for approval. If you're inclined to do that tonight, the first change, I'm referencing the, uh, October four memo that we have. Doesn't really jump out at yet, sorry. Page.
Page two.
Page two, thank you. Yes, the addition of the word, uh, voluntary, A in place of and. We'd like that to be left as what's being considered tonight. However, on page six, point number four there, pertaining to master plan developments in a development agreement, we would ask that that be not included with the recommendation tonight. That's something that we could just clean up before it goes to the city council. But to be clear, we're not recommending that you include a requirement for developers of master plan developments to enter into a development agreement.
Okay, so back to the fencing. So the part of the code that's kind of in question is, um, number three A under general fencing requirements. So currently, the code allows for a six-foot tall fence to be located within a front yard of a residential lot that has over two hundred feet of frontage and is also a minimum of twenty square feet, twenty thousand square feet in area, sorry. Um, if that fence maintains a ten-foot setback, is located on the sides of the residence, meets the clear vision requirements, and then also does not run more than fifty percent of the frontage line. So the proposed changes would allow a six-foot tall fence to be located up to the front property line, um, only in irregular shaped residential lots that again have that two hundred feet of frontage, but are a minimum of fifteen thousand square feet. Um, and that's if the fence is located on the sides of the residence, meets the clear vision requirements and does not run more than sixty percent of frontage length. So the changes are really to, um, specify the shape of the lot. The square footage requirement is reduced. The minimum setback requirement is then removed. Um, and the percentage of the, of the lot frontage that the fence can run along is, um, increased. Do you guys have any questions?
What was the concern that caused this change to come up?
So there's a resident that has constructed or started constructing a fence, um, right on their sidewalk line, so right on their front property line. Um, and then the adjacent lot, um, had originally proposed to do that, but has since um, set their fence back within the ten-foot setback.
Do I understand correctly that this still has to be approved to do this? It can be done, but needs approval.
As it changed to Title fifteen, the city council has to approve that or this. If they approve it, then we can issue a fence permit for the work that's been done and allow them to finish that up and everything is good. This is, incidentally, uh, so to speak to irregularly shaped lots. Our ordinance defines that and Mary's every bit as familiar with this as I am, but just to illustrate how irregularly shaped these lots are, that's about as wild as you get with that triangulately shaped one there. So we felt like that was a good route to go.
Any other questions? Okay, move a motion?
I move that we recommend that the fencing standards in the, uh, in Title fifteen be approved.
Second.
Changes in the fencing standards.
Do we need to make any condition of that with your, what you had specified earlier?
It's with the understanding that, um, that is excluding the verbiage in the memo that referenced a development agreement requirement for master plan developments, right?
Right.
I think we got that, and that's how I would present it then to the city council.
Great. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, our next topic is to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.